Evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2025 Gloucester City Council meeting. This public meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized who speak. Technical difficulties arrive and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present. The meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the findings, the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight in attendance, we have Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman. We have Ward One Councillor Scott Memart.
Good evening.
We have Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace. We have Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow. We have Councillor-at-Large Jeff Worthley. And we have the Council Vice President and Ward Five Councillor Sean Nolan. Ward Four Councillor Frank Majota is going to be absent this evening. And I am Tony Gross, Councillor-at-Large and City Council President. If you would stand please for the flag salute. Oh, and Grace Poirier, sorry. Sorry. Grace, Grace Perry, Chief Fire Chief Smith and CFO Connor McCorkle. And Pam Toby is also online. Sorry about that.
The flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate and the City Council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each.
Good evening, Susanna Altenborg. My late husband was Phil Boater.
Address two, please.
Pardon me?
Name and address.
Sixty-six Atlantic Street. Thank you. Phil Boater, my late husband, designed boats since 1952. A port without boats is just empty coves. Somebody has to design them for somebody to build them and for somebody to use them for pleasure, commerce, fisheries, science, defense maybe. Living and working Gloucester for now seventy-three years in this job, as is this year's the case, we took an interest in what's going wrong in the fishing industry. So September of 2004, we got featured National Fisherman proposing a significant shift in how the fleet was structured. We got Gloucester Daily Times, a full page in it. You know how difficult it is to get a full page in the Gloucester Daily Times. We collected signatures out of the industry, about sixty voices of various backgrounds. So this is not just in my mind, but it is actually in the interest of other people. So we did reproduce a report five years ago on twenty-five years of needless damage to a lot of New England's fishing industry and ecology. Only thirty-eight pages, but you remember this piece. I did share this with our, and we're finally getting to the point, our harbor planners, our friends from Greater Boston, from Wood Island, from all over the place. And I advised him in the summer of twenty-one that he may want to bear in mind this prior work about, we know what we're talking about. It is actually federal code we're referring to. No response. Twenty-two, another report to those folks, you may really want to do some reading on this. No response. Twenty-three, a report to them, why do none of our Gloucester Municipal Harbor and DPA master plans support a sustainable 21st century fishing fleet and port economy? None of our harbor plans to support that. None. Not because I think so, you might misunderstand, but there simply is no support in it. So I do find early March, the Gloucester Harbor Plan, the draft on the city website, I like to print things out, you can tell. And I do find in it rather four astonishing exercises. No reference to federal code that brought us to this place where this fishing industry is in serious trouble. What am I talking about? I will share with you only this twenty-two page about email, so your city council email. But it did take us, it's a collaborative effort, four hundred and five pages and thirty-four chapters to break down the legal realities of the last thirty-one years that brought us to the place that we are in bad shape.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. So I did write to the state coastal zone management for challenges, why they don't integrate federal code, state code, regional code. This harbor plan does not live up to the standards of coastal.
Five seconds.
So I want you to be aware of it. I think there's work to be done. I propose to finally maybe be able to give a presentation before this council on this issue at large. Thank you for your patience tonight. And we have a lot of work.
Thank you.
By the way, the mayor has this here. He's reading this as we speak. Thank you.
Next. Just walk right up.
Hi, my name is Zorbikinnixstein. I live at 594 Western Ave. I am up here to ask to revisit the parking removal from September tenth, twenty-four on Washington Street in a southerly direction of thirty-nine feet, as well as the October twenty-fourth decision, twenty-three, to remove more parking on Washington Street from Centennial intersection for forty feet, as well as March twenty-sixth, twenty-four Grove Street, no parking from forty feet from the intersection of Washington. I'm here again because the parking restrictions are limiting our ability to serve our customers and are limiting our ability to support our families. Since the end of the last parking restriction in the end of January, we've had fewer guests for three months in a row from the previous year, which has never happened in four years since we've owned it. We are down one thousand four hundred and fifty-five people since the beginning of February from last year. The three issues I want to address are pedestrian safety, driver's safety, and sightlines. I want pedestrians to be safe. That being said, having a twenty-foot distance from all of the crosswalk exceeds most of the crosswalks in Gloucester. Having a distance over twenty feet from a crosswalk does not occur in any other areas of Gloucester which serves multiple local businesses. I made a public records request, number twenty-five dash two-one-nine, about any accidents involving any pedestrians on the Grove Street as well as Washington Street crosswalk. There have been zero accidents involving pedestrians in the last four years. Driver's safety. I also want the intersection to be safe for driving. Restoring the three parking spots, which are more than twenty feet past the crosswalks, would not be hazardous for drivers or pedestrians and would reduce the harmful impact on small businesses by restricting less parking. The two main causes of car accidents are speeding and distracted driving. Removal of parking does not address either of the main causes of accidents. However, a blinking light and speed limit signs would address both. Sightlines. With the ten-foot width of the crosswalk plus the twenty feet past the crosswalk in all directions, the sightlines are thirty feet, which are better at the intersection of Washington Centennial than most of Gloucester where the twenty-foot distances are not enforced. The other great thing about Centennial Street and Grove Street is if you feel unsafe as a driver in either of those intersections, you could take Derby Street instead, which will not inconvenience you much at all. Instead of Centennial onto Washington, you can exit Centennial onto Exchange, Commonwealth, or Beacon. Again, minor inconvenience. We have video surveillance. I've watched dozens of accidents here. Most occur with no park, no cars parked in any of those spots which have been removed. If removal of all of these spots doesn't reduce the number of accidents and also causes the businesses to suffer, changes should be made to the policy that is not in the best interest of the businesses or the community. Had the businesses and the butters known about the meetings that were going to restrict the parking, we would have gladly been present and spoken out against any of these parking removals.
Twenty seconds.
Multiple occasions, but I was unaware, the other businesses were unaware, and the parking is just excessively removed in this intersection. And I request another chance to speak publicly before these decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at four A Birch Grove Heights. I've lived in Gloucester for eighty-eight years since birth. And it's going to be real tough for a guy like me, I'm old, to find another parking space to get to have a breakfast. And that's the way George's is. It's not young kids, teenagers, it's people like myself, elderly people, and that's probably ninety percent of his business. If you're going to make it hard for us to find a parking space, I'm not going to be going there. And I don't think a lot of other people. So I'm in support of Mr. George there. And I'm sorry I took about two minutes of my time to get up here. But anyway, I'm in support of going back and taking a look. You know, cars coming out of Centennial Avenue, there's a stop strip there, solid start strip, and the car's supposed to stop there before he gets to the crosswalk. But every car coming out of Centennial Avenue parks on the crosswalk to see what's coming and going. And I think he's right. Before you worry about parking, you ought to take about the safety issue. Those parking spots are not the issue. It's the crosswalks and the traffic and the guys and the girls and even part of myself that don't stop and take a look at what's coming and going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium? We have one online. Shelley?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Shelley Slaboter. I live at fifty-four Lexington Avenue, number twenty-one. I'm a board member of a small nonprofit called Speak Up For Animals that advocates for animal welfare in Massachusetts. I'm heartened that Gloucester will have a policy to limit the use of ESKARS, second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. However, I believe the policy should be stricter regarding their emergency use and alternative methods. The policy states that less toxic practices will be considered. I believe that alternative methods should be subject to better definitions in the policy, including their names and means of delivery, a specific timeframe of use before being abandoned for ESKARS, and judgment regarding their efficacy by another entity such as the Health Department along with the DPW Director. If reinstatement of ESKARS remains an option in the ordinance, their use should be only as a result of a public health emergency, a term that should be defined and include a specific timeframe. Any use of ESKARS puts rodent predators and outdoor cats and dogs in mortal danger. We need to protect them with the complete ban. Cholecalciferol, which is also known as high-dose vitamin D, is a lower-risk alternative that is as effective, although slower-acting, as ESKARS are at killing rodents. Like every rodenticide, it can be poisonous to other animals, but only if directly ingested. It will not harm a non-target animal who eats an affected rodent. Cholecalciferol is currently used in Watertown, could be utilized on a regular basis or if a public health emergency occurs. CO2, though now considered inhumane by the NIH as a method for euthanizing lab rats, is used in Newton along with shock boxes. In light of the suffering inflicted on the rodents themselves, I'd appreciate it if you would contemplate using shock boxes baited with a lower-risk alternative such as vitamin D and coupled with Contra Pest in a separate location, even if just as a pilot program in an infested area. Shock boxes are the least inhumane method for killing rodents, and Contra Pest, which is birth control for rodents, does not affect other mammals or birds and has been shown to delete rodent populations by ninety-five percent.
In seconds.
Oh, in a year's time. The current bill, I'm going to just speed this up, does not, has limitations. The House, the Bill to the State House, S six forty-four, have passed. So it's just as crucial that town officials do not recommend that residents simply contract and exterminate it because they will offer up ESKARS. I have one last.
No.
Am I done?
You've gone over about twenty.
All right. I'll be back to tell you the rest. I appreciate your time.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you so much. Yep. Bye-bye.
It was just in fairness to everyone, you know, time limit's the time limit. So that's it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
All right, we'll do the consent. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Scott.
President, I would like, I would like to pull off item number eight from the mayor's report, which is the Hesperus Avenue ROPW petition, and announce that this will be advertised for a public hearing on May twenty-seventh, which is in advance of our Budget and Finance Committee reviewing this matter on May twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nolan.
On May twenty-seventh, that's the City Council agenda.
Okay, so that's item number three and number, item number four on the mayor's report. And I would like to pull item number one under Communications and Invitations. That is the ALS proclamation. I would like to pull that off so that we can suspend our rules and because it is mid-May and this is a month of May proclamation, so we'll be visiting that. All right. Anybody else want to pull anything off the consent agenda? No? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Councillor Gilman, seconded by Councillor Nolan. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero. Now, Councillor. Do we have to vote on the, pull off? Yeah. All right. You want to make your motion there, Councillor Memart?
Item number eight of the mayor's report. It's a move.
Be enough.
Referring it to Budget and Finance Committee on the twenty-second of May, prior to a May twenty-seventh public hearing.
Second.
Okay.
I have a discussion. Yeah, my discussion is, I take it that we will open up the public hearing on that day and continue it until such time we've had the recommendation from Standing Committee.
We'll have it that night. We're, we're voting now to have the public hearing scheduled in advance of B and F. Right? Correct. Go ahead.
This really was just an announcement for transparency to the public that the public hearing, generally something like this goes to B and F. B and F votes, makes a committee recommendation, and then the public hearing gets advertised. But because of the timing of this, the legal ad is going to go into the newspaper prior to Budget and Finance taking it up. So it was more just an announcement for transparency's sake to the public that this matter is going to get advertised before B and F takes it up. Thank you.
Because right now is paving season. More discussion? Right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Councillor Nolan.
On the removal of three.
Yep, three and four.
These are matters that were put through by the mayor's office and they weren't sponsored by a councillor, so they are going to be brought back, sponsored by a councillor, and then put back on the agenda. They understand?
Do they need to be sponsored by a councillor?
Yes.
And the mayor can't.
We do have.
It's a legislative action.
Okay.
Oh, I'm, I move to support that.
Withdrawal? That's what we're looking at, is withdrawing it right now.
And then repost it.
Yeah. So there's no action by the council now, it'd be simply not moving it to planning and development.
It's on a consent agenda, so we're removing it from the consent agenda. So that's the action that we're going to take.
It's already been done.
Oh, we need to vote on it. Because it's been pulled by one councillor, hasn't been pulled by the council, and it's a council.
So we're voting to withdraw it.
Correct. Well, yes.
Okay. So a move to withdraw.
Well, pull, whatever, however you want to.
However you want it, right way to do it.
Fine. I think that.
But withdraw?
Right.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councillor Gilman, seconded by Councillor Memart. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And then I pulled item one off because it needs to, we need to take action tonight. It's up for council vote rather than having it appear twice. We need to suspend the rules.
Move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Grow, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. We already voted on the consent agenda.
Do you vote on the proclamation?
Oh. Oh, now we need to vote on accepting it? So you want to make that motion?
Move that we approve the proclamation for the City Council to commemorate May two thousand twenty-five as AMATR, AMO.
It is later in the agenda.
ALS. It is?
Yes. It's for council vote later.
All right. Then we'll just wait.
So we don't, yeah, we don't need to do that. Yep.
It'll take me that long to figure out how to say it.
It is on our, it's on our, it's on our, I guess since it's not on the agenda, it is in our template, isn't it?
But we just do it. Yeah. I would say just read it now and then vote on it.
Yeah.
Matter was on the consent agenda. City Council just voted to suspend the rules to take it up the first time they've seen it. And so now the vote is going to be on whether or not you want to accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
Let's, we just do it now?
Um, yeah, we can.
We're going to suspend the rules. Let's just suspend.
They already did.
I move that we accept the proclamation from the City Council to commemorate May two thousand twenty-five as ALS Awareness Month.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Grow, seconded by Councillor Memart, and seconded by Councillor Benson. Sorry, Scott. I know, but.
Councillor.
You want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like it to be read.
Proclamation to commemorate May two thousand twenty-five as AMATR, 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 TROP, AMATR, TROPIC? AMIOTROPIC? Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month. Whereas amniotropic lateral sclerosis, as commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new amniotropic lateral sclerosis ALS cases are reported every year, the estimates show that every ninety minutes someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas, the exact causes of ALS are unknown and there is no known cure for ALS. And people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And securing access to new therapies, durable medication, medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assertive technology for those living with ALS. And whereas, the ALS Association is the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally and has committed more than a hundred and fifty million dollars to support more than five hundred and fifty projects across the United States and eighteen other countries. And the ALS Association is committed to accelerating the peace and discovery, the peace of discovery, oh, sorry, the pace of discovery fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone everywhere until a cure can be found. And whereas, AMIOTROPOFIC, TROPIC, LATERAL SCHROSES AWARENESS MONTH provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledge the terrible impact this disease has on those individuals and their families, and support research to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gloucester City Council declares the month of May as ALS Awareness Month and signed by the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Gloucester City Council. Again. I don't think, we already voted it, so. Let's go right to O and A. Scott.
George.
Up to you.
So we have up in front of us on confirmations of reappointments. We have boards and committees for the Gloucester Housing Authority, you have Scott Duffney. Scott, would you like to take the mic? And actually, before you take the mic, I'd like to say that we have two of Gloucester finest. We have a retired Gloucester police officer and we have Dean Sala. And both of them in gray tonight, and both of them are great community advocates, and I'm happy to have you both here tonight. So Scott, if you want to tell us a little bit of yourself?
Yep. I think most people here know me. I figure that I should be here tonight if you people have the foresight to hopefully put me through again for another five years. I thought it would be professional for only myself, but since I'm in position of the Housing Authority, which I'm currently the chair of the meetings, I thought it was important that I dressed up, made myself look decent, and show up and tell you people that I hope that you will definitely consider me for another five-year term. It's an honor and a privilege to work for the city as well as the Housing Authority.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Is there any councillor comments tonight? Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. Firstly, thank you, Scott. You have been a public servant pretty much your entire life, and you're continuing in that, in retirement, continuing to serve the public.
Policemen ever retire, they're like Marines. See, you know, if you break the law, you'll see. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. So the people that you help sometimes tell you how much they appreciate that, and sometimes they're not able to or don't know that you're helping them. And I think all of us know the difference that you make for the people who need the most help in Gloucester. And I just want to say heartfelt thank you and appreciation. I've known you for forty years, but if I just ran into you yesterday and read some of the things you've done, I'd be impressed. So I'm very proud of you and appreciate you volunteering again for another five years.
Thank you for your kind words, councillor. I appreciate that very much.
They're deserved.
Thank you, Councillor Worthley. Anybody else in the council? Councillor Gilman.
Scott, no matter what you do in the city, you always represent us with dignity and pride and pride.
Scott, no matter what you do in the city, you always represent us with dignity and pride and it's totally appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Big heart.
Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Gold.
I just want to echo the appreciation for all you do in the city and especially the, the housing authority. I, I, Jeff has already said what needed to be said in that regard, but uh, it's, it's really important that we, we know that people are taken care of, people need to be taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just, it, you know, everything that you do is amazing, but also it's, what really strikes me is the energy that you bring and, and the enthusiasm that's boundless, that just is, and also so infectious and we really do appreciate that.
Appreciate that, sir.
Any other counsel?
Uh, Scott, as I said at O and A, you're one of my favorites. You've owned it for a long time, you work hard in the community, you've gained the community's trust as an officer. And that's important. It, it's tough to be all the work of people that may be doing something different or, you know, wrong, but to understand where they're coming from and help direct them in a manner that makes them become better people. And the way that you can actively work on a role with the housing authority to see beyond someone's troubles and make sure that they're being treated fair. That is always something that will be important to Gloucester. Everybody makes mistakes, you understand that, and you can see through them and understand who is a good person that did something wrong. And I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And you are all set, ordered, and good to go.
Senator Slickby, did you have something you wanted to say? CFO? Mike just came on, I guess. Could have announced that she's also in attendance. Okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, Council President. Sorry, I stepped away from my desk there, I heard my name across the room. Yes, I've been Scott for a long time. I think you're doing a fantastic job. The mayor is very, um, pleased to see you willing to step up for another term, so thank you for your service and continued service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
May eighth, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Counselor Memart.
Uh, if the council is willing, I'd like to make a motion to accept the May eighth Budget and Finance, uh, Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memart, seconded by Counselor Grow. Counselor Gilman.
I'd like to, um, approve this, however, I'd like to remove item number eleven, the memorandum from the CFO and number two-two-two-zero-two-five essay sixteen to establish and fund a new school district reserve fund in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd just like to take that up separately so we can hear a little bit more about that. Thank you. Well, I, I support, um.
Just number eleven, correct?
That's all.
Okay. The way you said it sounded like it was two things.
No.
Okay. Okay.
You're all set? Okay, all, although it's a little summary of it, I feel like it's pretty well articulated in the minutes. There, there, it's, does the coun- does the council want a summary? No.
Got it, we know what that's about.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do you want to read item number eleven? Read the motion and then give the committee report or?
Yes, uh, item. Item number eleven is a memorandum for CFO in a two thousand twenty-five essay number sixteen. This is for the purpose of establishing and funding a new school district reserve fund in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance voted two in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Uh, he was late getting to that particular discussion in order to recommend that the city council accepts provisions of Mass General Law forty, chapter forty, section thirteen E, authorizing the city to establish a special education reserve and to appropriate or transfer money to the reserve fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated and unb- unbudgeted costs of special education and recovery high school programs out of district tuition or transportation. Funds in the reserve fund can only be expended or transferred out of, after a majority vote of both the school committee and city council. The balance of such a reserve fund shall not exceed two percent of the annual net school funding, spending of the school district, and I so move second.
Motion made by Counselor Memart, seconded by Counselor Worthley, discussion. Counselor Gilman.
So because this is an important issue, I was wondering with your permission, Mr. President, if we could ask either Connor or Kenny to explain the importance of this.
Connor may be the. Connor, can you, um, give, uh, a little breakdown of what this is?
Sure. So during the FY twenty-five budget process, we saw a large spike in out-of-district, uh, transportation costs and special education costs for the school. Uh, so at that time, the mayor committed to trying to establish this fund that would allow us to have a reserve set aside, so as we see those costs that can go up and down over the years, uh, we have some money set aside to be able to deal with those peaks and valleys.
Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
I just want to say I think this is one of the, such an incredibly responsible, uh, decision to make in terms of doing this. I think people forget often that we get struck with specialized costs mid-year that we don't anticipate that can be upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars transportation. And having this, uh, uh, buffer for that kind of expenditure is something that's going to carry over years moving forward. It's just really smart budgeting and I appreciate those who put it together.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Um, first, I definitely support this and I just want to correct the record, I should have done it earlier, but I didn't abstain, I voted present. The difference is, one is if you have a conflict, uh, I just wasn't there for the beginning of the presentation and I didn't feel comfortable.
Actually, the saying was said at the meeting, but it probably should have been corrected then.
I thought I said I'd vote present.
Anyway, it doesn't matter, this can be correct.
But now I just want to say, for the record, I fully support it, it's a smart move. Um, I think this eliminates any surprises or at least deals with surprises, doesn't eliminate them. Um, the question I ask, I have is, I thought if it goes into a stabilization account that it would take two-thirds vote of the council to take money out of that stabilization account. And as read, it says, uh, majority vote of both the school committee and the city council. And I, we, it came up at committee and I don't remember the answer and I'm sorry, I I don't recall. I think it takes two-thirds to have money come out of a stabilization account. So.
Connor, do you have?
Yeah, if I may, that was my understanding as well, but our city auditor corrected us in the, um, subcommittee meeting to let us know it did not need a two-thirds vote, um, to take this money out.
Thank you.
Sorry for my confusion on that. So I support it and I'm glad it doesn't need a two-thirds vote, I guess. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, so this money, uh, can't be used in the year that it's authorized. So, but this year it only has another month left. It, uh, doesn't really matter. And, uh, just, just wanted to make people aware of that. And this is also, Connor, what, has it been baked into, um, the formula for free cash?
It's not part of the formula, uh, at this point. Uh, but that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be at free cash in twenty-five, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Alright. This is a roll call? This one is not a roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And the abstention should have been present, but they're going to listen to it.
I may have said the wrong thing.
Yeah.
I was present.
Yeah, yes.
But I didn't.
The intention was there.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Memart. Second part, part two.
Part two, on a recommendation, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one present. To recom- I just lost my screen. Got it? Thank you. Excuse me. Recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, two thousand twenty-five essay number sixteen. It's a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one, of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund, undesignated fund balance, free cash, account number as noted, to the school special education stabilization fund to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of paying unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education, out-of-district tuition, transportation, and recovery high school tuition, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memart, seconded by Counselor Worthley, discussion. Counselor Grow.
I just have a question for Connor, if you could. Is there specifically a difference between a stabilization, stabilization fund and a reserve fund? Or are they effectively the same?
They are two different things, different, uh, Mass General Enabling Laws.
Okay, so we're talking about a stabilization fund? No, we're just talking about a reserve fund.
It's a reserve fund, yeah.
Thank you. It's just, you know.
The motion note that.
Well, the motion says it's to, to create, uh, the school special education stabilization fund to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of paying unanticipated costs. So I just question, is, is that the correct language that we should be using on this?
It is. Well, the city attorney and I went back and forth on this a little bit when we sent it to the school committee for vote. It's the language that Desi uses, um, but this is the correct, uh, phrasing of it. That's the way that Mass General Law reads.
Are you good?
Just to add more confusion to us. Yeah. Suspend the rules.
Alright, um.
One more question, if I may?
Yep.
This relates to the prior motion, but it relates to this one too. The question, the balance in such reserve fund shall not exceed two percent of the annual net school spending of the school district, so I can't do the math quickly enough to know what two percent of a school budget is, but.
I think it's total school, um. It also includes the city's contribution too in that formula, correct?
Correct. And if we're looking at just the schools' general fund, it'd be about one point five million, rounded.
The fund could never exceed that? Is that, the understanding was that we can't put more than that per year? I just wanted to make sure I understand that correctly.
The fund should not exceed that.
Who monitored, I mean, that's a council decision if it, if it gets.
Auditor.
Too high?
Yeah, the auditor, and anytime we appropriate, try to appropriate money into it through a special appropriation, we would check.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Counselor Memart.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Grow.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There's one more item that, for just an info-only update regarding the, um, BNF, um, consent agenda. I'm sorry, committee report.
Okay, um. Kenny, do you want to talk about this, um, award? I want to recognize Kenny Costas with us remotely.
Good evening, councilors. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So this award that we've received from the GFOA, um, we've received this now seven years, um, in a row and now we're working on our eighth year and it's a, it's a great award for the city. There's about uh, fifty communities in Massachusetts that, uh, apply for the award. So it's a great thing for the city.
Alright, any questions? Counselor Gilman.
So for members of the public and a reminder for city councilors, that document is on the auditor's homepage and the first seven to nine pages of this document gives taxpayers a really good understanding of all the awesome things that we do to stay on budget and all the opportunities that we take advantage of that makes us able to do some of the great things that we do. So it's a really good PR opportunity for us to really champion that document and to thank Kenny and his team for a job well done.
Read.
Through the chair, if I could?
Yes.
So, a- as Counselor Gilman mentioned, like the first ten pages, there's a lot of, um, it tells a great story of the city, there's a lot of pictures. Um, but also there's a lot of numbers, um, you know, financial numbers in the, um, in the report and that's something that, uh, the bond rating like S and P and Moody's, um, that they're very interested, so they, so to have this type of report, it's the hi- it's the highest financial, um, reporting document that you can have, uh, in the nation, in the country. So it's, it, it's really, it's a high, we're setting a high standard, uh, in our financial reporting. Um, just to give you, so twenty years ago, the city, I mean, we've always issued a financial statement, but previously it was called a basic financial statement report. Now it's, you know, it's a comprehensive, um, audited financial report, which is, uh, it's a much higher standard. It's, like I said, it's the highest standard, um, in the country and the nation. So thank you.
Oh, thank you and thank, thank the, uh, the whole auditor's office and the, uh, collection, but the treasurer's office. Um, great, great work, great job, um.
Thank you.
We weren't always this on top of our finances.
I got it, we were not. It's a good team, Kenny.
Yep.
Thank you.
Order of business.
Thank you, Kenny. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
May fifth, ordinances and administration standing committee report.
Mike.
Uh, CC two thousand twenty-five zero seventeen, Benson. City council has petitioned the state to lower the speed limit on Dale Avenue from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour and Hancock Street from thirty miles per hour to fifteen miles per hour. Chair, would you like to have Dylan speak on this for a moment?
Are we voting on this tonight? We should put each motion on the table.
Okay.
Separately, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on a motion by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Nolan, the ordinance administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, recommend that the city council forward a letter to the Mass DOT requesting that the speed limit on Dale Avenue, a public way, be reduced from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour and that such letter be accompanied by the speed study and certificate of vote of the city council. And I so move.
Second.
Second in, Counselor Benson.
Yes, um, speaking first on Dale Ave. Um, folks have come to, have come to me regarding this, um, their concern regarding Dale Avenue speeding. Um, the speed study did show that most of the folks were actually obeying the speed limit below thirty miles an hour, but there were some folks that were going above that, close to even forty-five, a few folks. Um, but again, having that posted, um, posted sign is deterring people from speeding. Um, but I request, um, and urge all of you to support this and lower the speed limit to thirty miles an hour. As we know, we have the Soylo Free Library that's going to be opening up, sorry, twenty, sorry, twenty. So lowering it from thirty to twenty, thank you, uh, counselor. Uh, from twenty, we obviously have the post office here on Dale Ave, we have the Soylo Free Library, we have, uh, Central Grammar Apartments, which is a senior housing. Um, we also have several residential homes here on Dale Ave as well as a dental office. Um, so this really, really having this be- below to twenty miles an hour will really, um, force people to pay attention, to slow down on a very busy street. And obviously, we have city hall here on Dale Ave as well. And if anyone has any questions.
Counselor Worthley.
First, I'd like to note and commend Counselor Benson for bringing this forward. People drive too fast on every street, but this one in particular, especially with elderly there and kids. Um, and it's obviously, it's a civic center, it's a place where people walk. Um, I used to work at the Chamber of Commerce and we had identified Dale Ave as a street that could, it used to be a two-way street. And so people did drive slowly because there's parking on both sides in a two-way street, so we recommended to the council to make it one-way. And the other piece that never got finished was, and to put angle parking in to get, I think it was additional eighteen parking spaces if we did that. So I like to also secondarily for this to consider the importance of maybe getting some more parking there by looking at angle parking. But for this part here, to ask the state to reduce it to twenty miles an hour, it makes sense. Coupled with. sense, coupled with good signage and enforcement too. So hopefully, once this happens, we can also encourage the mayor and the chief of police to prioritize enforcement.
Absolutely, and there'll be, with this, there'll be a postage sign. Obviously, it defaults, if there is no postage, it defaults to 30. Now with this, it will be postage with 20 miles an hour to really deter people, and when they see that, they will slow down.
Thank you.
Council Grow.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment, especially for people who might be watching, to explain that our speed limits are governed by state law and not local law, and that we actually have to ask permission from the state to reduce our speed limits. Speed limits that, as Council Benson just noted, that are not posted are, in heavily congested areas in cities, 30 miles an hour by default. Council Gross and I have put in a motion for a measure for next meeting to reduce that from 30 to 25, which we can do unilaterally, and I hope the council supports this. We certainly need to make our streets safer, and, and this is a good step, both Council Benson, Council Benson's motions, and also our future motion coming up next meeting.
And if I may, to respond to that, and I really do appreciate, because I was looking on our code and muni code and seeing if we had adopted this, and then talking to you, and we hadn't, so I'm really commend both of you for putting that forward.
Next meeting.
Yeah, obviously, I know it's next meeting, we'll talk, but I just want to say.
Council Gilman.
Yeah, and just for those that are new, I actually put that exact order in about four years ago, and we did have some momentum, so I will pull the documentation together and share it with the new order administrators, just so you can see that we did get pretty far with some research and benchmarking of other municipalities. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, in closing, as before we vote, I do appreciate this, and, and this has been one of many streets where I hear from constituents downtown in Ward Two, and I know Marjorie being in Ward Three, very close to Ward Two, where people are calling us all the time about speeding. So beyond this, just slow down, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council forward a letter to Mass DOT requesting the speed limit on Hancock Street, a public way, be reduced from 30 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour, and that such letter be accompanied by certificate, certificate of vote of the city council. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Grace.
Yeah, so again, this is reducing it further from, so we've talked about 20 miles an hour here on Dale Ave. Hancock Street is a very narrow street, looking to reduce that to 15. I spoke to some folks at the now new beautiful senior housing that's right on, adjacent to Hancock and Middle. Folks telling me that people are just speeding right down and not also, not following the actual directions out there, so making sure that you're actually following the rules of the road. Also, some folks from the temple also talking about just people flying down. So hopefully, we can reduce this to 15, and this will really slow people down on these narrow side streets, especially on Hancock Street, and I hope that you all consider it. Thank you.
Council Worthley.
Yes, I just have a question. Council Benson, thank you again for bringing this forward. In your description, you said about people driving down Hancock. Hancock also continues through to Rogers Street, and that's where it's two-way. Are we, and I hope we are, but are we making this 15 miles an hour for the entire length?
This would be the entire length, yep. This would be the entire length. I just described it because of the folks that had contacted me were at the YMCA, and just also folks understanding the directionals on that side, so that would be important.
We might want to ask the administration when this gets approved to put 15 mile-an-hour signs on both sides for traffic coming up from Rogers.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that should be in the record, that as we vote on this, that this, that we have that postage all the way down. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
May 7th Planning and Development Standing Committee Report.
Just a couple of quick items. One is the subcommittee voted for these road closures on Harbor Loop, for the Harbor Loop Concert Series. I'm just looking for the dates here. I'm trying to find the back page. Yeah, well, he said. Okay, I'll do it in the microphone this time. The special events for the Harbor Loop Summer Concert Series on July 10th, 2025, July 17th, July 24th, July 31st, August 7th, August 14th, and August 21st, and August 28th, with the rain date of September 4th, 2025. This is always a great event, so please head down there and enjoy the concert series. The only other thing that we have for discussion is a, not for discussion, but to announce is that we are having a site visit at 14 Prospect Street at 3 o'clock on Friday, May 16th, that's this Friday. This is the Yambets Building, it's for a conversion from the existing commercial use of it to a seven-unit apartment complex. So anybody who is interested in seeing the site visit, it is for the city council subcommittee and members of the city council. We don't do any deliberations, we do ask questions, the questions are written down for the applicant, and then brought back to this subcommittee for review and discussion. But people are welcome to attend. And I think that's it for us.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Hey, very good.
Oh, oh yeah, sorry, I apologize. But you have, don't we have to make a motion to withdraw?
No, that's going to be, it has to go through the pool. It's going to be the next meeting.
Withdrawal for the, for the...
Because it's already been advertised for public hearing and scheduled for public hearing. It gets withdrawn on that date.
Yeah, because we did do the, okay, that's fine.
And then we have a public hearing that is to be continued on demolition regulations, GZO chapter three? Dimensional, what did I say, demolition?
You're referring to the, the next scheduled public hearing.
Yes, sorry, yes, I didn't ask you to tell me what we were doing.
If I may ask, Mr. President, I, you went to the planning board, they asked for a recommendation from the zoning board, zoning board gave them back recommendations to the planning board, they don't know if the planning board has met again since then, but then it will go to the Planning and Development Committee. Does, Council Grow, would you know if it's at the planning board yet, back to the planning board?
I believe that they are going to have the recommendation this week.
Okay.
They meet Thursday night, I think.
We'll be able to deal with it on the, we will take it up on the...
We'll open it on the 27th.
Well, it's already open.
Oh, it is, isn't it? Yeah, so it'll be continued then.
Yep, so we're continuing it to May 27th, 2025.
We wouldn't imagine that P and D will take it up before the 27th.
Oh.
We can take it up next meeting.
I just, yeah. We'll take it up next meeting. What we got before me tonight.
I just want to make sure, I'm, I know when these dates are, I can ask this offline. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
All right, so for council vote. Councilor Gross, discussion regarding the Rose Baker Senior Center as a location for city council meetings during summer months.
Okay. I moved to change the location of city council meetings to Rose Baker Senior Center during the months of July and August. Nice so move. Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Grow.
I didn't say anything. No.
Oh, Memhard.
I'm a little voice in your ear, Tony.
Sorry. I just keep hearing it.
I'll second it if you like.
Discussion, and if we do this, no discussion, everybody's happy with this?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Individuals counsel, next order of business, Madam Clerk, sorry.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Council Memhard.
The mayor's on top of any requests that we have from Ward One, and I would like to thank the mayor and the DPW director, Mike Hale, for some extensive collaboration with National Grid and their utility paving division, which completed extensive paving on Atlantic Road following gas work there, and they did a nice job. And if anybody's been in the neighborhood, there's hope in the neighborhood that Beach Road will get some TLC, tender love and attention from National Grid through the negotiation with the city's DPW director, in addition to doing Traverse Street and part of the gas work there and the laterals and all the rest of it. But don't speed up just because the road's paved.
Thank you. Council Nolan.
I'd actually like to, you know, thank the DPW right now for a lot of work they've done with the understaffed crew. There's been some complaints about street sweeping. It's, it's there that it's going to be monitored, it's going to happen, but when you have people on vacation, I just want you to know that we only, are limited to a certain amount of operators that can run equipment, so you're going to run into a flu, a few slowdowns or not showing ups. The beaches, the parks, and the cemeteries are coming through very well. The generous gardeners have done a great job in the Boulevard and all their other 80-plus spots that they take care of. And I just want to ask you guys in all the city that when you see a DPW crew doing something, you know, thank them, wave to them, or smile, and when you see two guys driving by in a truck, they're not doing just nothing, they're going to the next job. It, it's, it's how they go, they respond to multiple calls a day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Worthley.
I'd like to, a couple of things, I'd like to echo some of the comments that Council Memhard and Nolan have regarding our DPW. There was a day where we had 86 people working for the DPW, and I think we're at 13, 14.
Highway Department.
Right, the highway department. Yeah, so it's a lot of work for very few people, and they're, you know, we, I mean, they work really hard, and they work, they also get called out on jobs sometimes when there's other things that burst and break and things like that. So in addition to giving them a wave and giving them a little credit, bring them a cold water or something, because they are working hard. I also want to commend Council Memhard and the mayor and the DPW director for working the relationship with National Grid to try to get some improvements to Beach Road, maybe one of the worst streets in the city, but hopefully going to be one of the better ones in short order. So that's exciting. And then I don't know when the timing is right, but it feels like it's getting close to it. It'd be helpful to have either a brief public discussion here, or some sort of meeting about any improvement or change or continuation of the issues relative to the creek. We'd like to make sure that people, if it is still a problem, that they're not swimming in there, and that they're aware of it. So love to have a little presentation or request, maybe the health department can give us a little update on that. Thank you.
I neglected to comment, if I might just follow up. In addition to the road work, DPW has exercised, we're thanking DPW where DPW is due, the John Alto Park received a lot of attention recently with some tree work that caused some problems for the neighborhood and the golf club. And the number of playgrounds have recently received a lot of tender loving attention, including the Cripple Cove Playground, which has been regraded and a brand-new climbing structure. I think the same thing is on Courtless Landing in the playground down that way. The DPW is really right on this in terms of attention and improvements to making our playgrounds safe and attractive. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Council Benson.
Thank you. Just one thing, I've been getting a lot of calls and emails from constituents regarding these moped bikes that are speeding up and down, and also they're going through pedestrian paths at the Green Street Park, they're also going on Burnham's Field. So just requesting that we could get some more enforcement there, and they're going late at night, and it's really disturbing the neighborhoods that are surrounding those parks and just them also going up and down the streets, the trash street and cutting through, going towards Gloucester Crossing, and it's disturbing folks. And if I may, I just wanted to take a moment to speak about the proclamation regarding ALS, and I was very moved by it, just understanding this devastating disease, I'm sorry. And I believe we all should work together to support those living with ALS, and I know the Ice Bucket Challenge and Pete Freides, who was a baseball player at Boston College, and, and actually, his father was a city counselor while I was a law clerk in the city of Beverly, but just so many people are suffering from this, and just hearing tonight, the folks that are possibly, like, living very short lives, it's just a very struggle, and I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional than I was during the read of the proclamation, but I really appreciate us putting this forward and continuing to bring awareness of this cruel illness that is just causing so much suffering and pain for those that are living with it and the family and friends that are also suffering, but thank you.
Thank you. Council Gilman.
Just two things. Number one, just a reminder that the Senior Care Breakfast is this Friday from 7:00 to 9:30. And the other thing I wanted to remind everybody is that this Saturday, the Gloucester Education Foundation is having their annual arts festival, and I just wanted to remind everybody that this year, the annual celebration is moved to a new site just for this year. O'Malley will be the main venue with pre-K to 12 artwork on display in the Commons, performances from theater, band, recorder, and chorus in the courtyard and auditorium. There'll be food vendors, it does an art-making activities, and there will be a free shuttle that will take festival goers to nearby, the KPM Museum Green to see additional artwork and participate in even more arts activities. And we ask that the public not park in, well, please do park in the lower parking lot at O'Malley, because the entry, the loop is going to be for people that have accessibility issues. But it's a great day, and if you want to see the schedule, you can go right on to www.thinkthebest.org, and you can see all the schedules, and it's going to be awesome. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Grace.
I just want to ask that we amp up the enforcement of parking on sidewalks with the nice weather here, there's a lot more people out and about, and the cars are nice, safely parked on the sidewalks, and the pedestrians are walking in the street. So I really think that it would behoove the city to, to step up enforcement on that, and also in keeping with the oral communications tonight. I really feel that a traffic study is in order for the Centennial Grove Street, Washington Street intersection. It is absolute mayhem there, certain portions of the day when the high school is getting out, at the very least, until something can be done to make it safer. Some serious considerations should be given to putting a police detail there from like 2:00 to 2:30 when the high school is getting out, because if you've ever been down there at that time, it's insane. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Grow.
Yeah, thank you. Most of my requests to the mayor have already been submitted. Couple of things. One, between Kenny Costa and the word tonight from his department, the work that Connor's doing, the work that DPW doing, is doing, you know, we get a lot of complaints from people about, you know, the city, the city's not doing this, the city's not doing that. But I just want us to take a moment and thank our city staff and workers and crews out there, because I don't think people have an understanding of just how hard everyone's working, and the sheer magnitude of the job that they do on a daily basis. And I, for one, appreciate it, I think we all appreciate it, and I think it's every once in a while, we should just make sure that we say that. So thank you, all of you, for the hard work that you put in on behalf of the city. The second thing I'd like to do is just remind the mayor that I'm looking forward to seeing the Rainbow Crosswalks repainted in advance of Pride Month, a couple of weeks away, so just put that on the to-do list. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to put a request in that the mayor share with the council, the, there's a movie coming to town. It's here now. So yeah, stay at Winger Sheek, it's setting up, it's going to be a couple of structures and lanes code that they're putting up, Stagewood Park, so good harbor. So they do have a, they do have a schedule, I think I'll ask them if they can, they have an electronic version if that can be, oh, that's it? No. Oh, the budget?
It's the budget.
And they're also paying every service and everything. Right, oh yeah, they're, 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 they're bringing their pockets full of cash. Oh, yeah, they, they're, 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 they're bringing their pockets full of cash. Catherine, do you have something you want to, on the movie?
No. Well, one, I just wanted to let you all know, I took notes on all of your requests. I will pass those along. Yes, the movie is going to be, they did one day shooting this week, but the bulk of it is going to be done between, and I won't get you a schedule of it, but between May 20th and June 6th. And they're going to be shooting at Lanes Cove. Stage Fort Park, they're going to be using Half Moon Beach. And then they have some private properties that they're going to be shooting at. We have, they are making some donations to the city and paying for the use of the parking lots and whatnot. And they've been working with DPW, and DPW's been doing a lot of work with them to get them the things that they need in order to do their production and whatnot. But it's going to be about, it's, it's the first tranche, as they call it, I guess, in a 10-series Apple TV show. So they're just coming to do the first three shows. They think they'll be back again in August to do some more shows. It's about an island town, island coastal town in New England that's haunted, and the mayor is trying to improve tourism. So that's kind of the baseline of it, but.
Catherine, is, is the report that you had that I saw the other day, is, do you have that electronically?
Yes, we do. We can share that.
Can you share that with us? That would be great.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. And also.
And is there a plan to have like a Facebook post from the city, just so folks, or some sort of going through the socials that folks would, we'd be able to share, and then folks would also?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can certainly share that, because they're going to be in Lanes Cove for a little bit of a time, and there's going to be some buildings that stay standing there. But yes, we will definitely let the community know. The community's going to start asking. They'll see those yellow arrow signs up and, but we will get the information out. Yeah.
All right, yeah, and I made a mistake calling it a movie. It's actually a TV series. So hopefully, they'll, they'll keep coming back. It'll be, it'll be a hit.
Yeah.
And also, next, at our next meeting, we're going to get a presentation from the Bunker Hill Group. So we'll find out what they're up to. And that's it. Attain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Councillor Gro, seconded by Councillor Nolan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Eight to zero, one absent.